Okay, board members, take your seats. Welcome to the Budget Work Session. As you know, tonight we'll be discussing the FY 2016 approved budget that we will be passing a week from today. And we will start the presentation with some remarks from Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed, members of the Board. I would like to touch on a few of the issues that were raised during the budget hearing this past, I had Monday, but I think it was really Tuesday evening. The first was, there was a reference to school-based carryover. And yes, on an annual basis, we do allow for schools to plan for 25% carryover. That is considered a practice that many, many school systems use across the country for a couple of different reasons. Then it doesn't, it creates conditions where our principals can plan for larger budget items that they typically could not afford in their, in any one year. And in addition to that, it prevents some of that last-minute, you know, rush to spend whatever money they may have. And that also saves the division money. But primarily, their ability to plan for larger items is very important to this system because, quite frankly, we're not in a position as a system to fund many of those large expenditures that, under ordinary circumstances, we would love to be in a position to be able to fund. For an example, replacement of laptops and computers and student computers or labs. Oftentimes, that's what our schools use that carryover for. Right now, the carryover is about 12.5 million on an annual basis. Very, very, very small percentage of our overall budget. But it is considered a practice that is used by many school divisions across the country. So I think it's something I would continue to recommend and encourage the school board to allow our schools to continue to do. And then, and it does assist our schools in paying for things that we would ordinarily pay for, but they're able to do that. We also have increased accountability for our schools and their budgets. Just since I've been here, I know there's been a lot of attention on this over time. You know, we've, we're looking at the school-based funds in every way we can, making sure that we're holding our schools accountable, making sure that we're, we've had lots of training for our schools. We also are now conducting turnover audits as we have transitions in principals, you know, and that's a really good practice. And so, and we have newer and tighter regulations around ECA funds. So we do recognize and pay very close attention and hold our schools accountable for the way in which they, they manage their money. But school-based carryover is important. Anything that's left in a school's budget beyond that 25% is rolled back into the general coffers and it's reflected in our year-end balance. So it's, it's not hidden anywhere. It's reflected in our year-end balance on an annual basis. And you'll recall, and the board does know this, that every year that's shown in our budget how much money at year-end is in carryover, et cetera, that's shown to the public and to the board. There was also a reference made to contract length reductions. And there was a particular employee group, the, I just went blank. They're occupational therapy aides, where there are five of them in this division. Unfortunately, this division has been in a position to have to look at contract length reductions on many times, many occasions. So we didn't just pick fiscal year 15 and start looking at this. This has been done consecutively over many years. And in fact, if you talk with assistant principals out there, they can tell you that they remember a time when their contracts were cut. In fact, I found one report, 2011, that Kristen provided me. In the 2011 fiscal year budget, we had to cut 877 professionals' contract lengths, included teachers, principals, ESPITS, and they lost approximately 7% of their pay that year. So last year in fiscal year 15, you know, we had that menu of cuts and we had lots of really tough decisions to make. So we did have in that budget the reduction of contracts and we tried to mitigate it where it wouldn't be too many days. But we have 3,363 employees that were affected by that reduction in days. So it wasn't just the five individuals that were here. Certainly hate that we have to affect anyone, but it's just those kinds of decisions that we've had to make. It, it was a much smaller reduction than what was felt in previous reductions. On average, this affected those employees by about 1.6%. And we're happy to talk more about that, should you have questions, more about that later. I don't have to tell you how I feel about class size. You all know where I am on class size. I do think that we're headed in the right direction. We certainly have a lot more work to do. So that, and then salaries. I would say the same thing about salaries. We all, there's so much we want to do, but are unable to do. This year, we have reminded folks, and I do believe it's important that while we'd like to do the full step, the full 1% market scale adjustment, we don't even think that's sufficient. But we knew going into this, and we've communicated this with the teacher organizations and associations, even beginning last fall, is we were going to protect the step no matter what, but we weren't certain that the one full market scale would be protected if we were not fully funded. And that's been communicated all throughout this, this process. I will tell you, though, in light of recent past, all you have to do is look at what recent past, the step and the .62 is better than what we've been able to do in recent past. I'm not saying it's great and I'm not proud of it. It needs to be much more, but in context of where we've been, I think that, that is, that is important. I think it's also important to emphasize that many of the issues raised, including contract length, class size, workload of our counselors, psychologists, social workers, and all of those other positions you brought up earlier, class size, compensation for our employees are all directly correlated to the amount of money that we receive on an annual basis from the county. And, and you know, that, that at the end of the day, we're only able to do how much we're able to do based upon how much money we receive. And I will tell you, this superintendent and this board would be ecstatic if we were able to address all the many issues we face in our system. And we're simply unable to do that because of chronic underfunding of our system. Finally, I think it's important to reiterate for the public that this board and the leadership team have spent well over 10 months on the development of the fiscal year 16 budget. And we've been talking about, when we talked about fiscal year 15, we talked about fiscal year 16, fiscal year 17, and I don't think it stopped. We've, you know, kept working in all these consecutive years in earnest. This process includes many small working group meetings with the budget chair, Mrs. Reed, and the budget chair, Mrs. Smith, who've put lots of time and effort into this. It also includes many informal meetings with board members. It also includes many formal work sessions and board meetings. Since September of 2014, since we started this school year, the school board has had many meetings on the budget specifically. And these include four regular meetings, 14 committee meetings, nine work sessions, two forum work sessions, two public hearings, six joint budget development committee meetings, two joint meetings with our board and the board of supervisors, and those are just the formal meetings. So this board and the leadership of this school system have taken this work very seriously. Our financial, our budget staff has done a great job and works very, very hard in helping us through these really complex and difficult challenges. But I just think that the board should be complimented for the great work and the time and interest and focus that you all have put on this, this hard work. So just wanted to, to touch on those issues. So thank you, Mrs. Reed, for a little bit of the, the time.
Thank you, Dr. Garza.
Oh, one other thing I forgot to mention, I apologize. Another thing that this board did that I don't think has ever been done before is you all developed the budget development strategy for fiscal year 16. You remember, this was a document where you outlined what you were going to do as a board for fiscal year 16. And it really talked about what happened in fiscal year seven, excuse me, 15, how that was a strain on our system and how we purposely said we weren't going to, you know, we're going to try to protect the system as much as possible in fiscal year 16, noting that we needed a stabilizing year. You remember that, that word has been used quite a bit, knowing also that we had huge cuts potentially that we were going to have to make for fiscal year 17. So I wanted to remind the board about this document that you all crafted very early in the fall, I think it was like October. So thank you very much, Ms. Reed, I apologize.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. So what are we doing tonight? We're doing several things. We're going to, staff will review the attachments that are on board docs and will provide an update on some late-breaking budget questions and responses. We will get feedback on the main motion as proposed, and then we will discuss any potential amendments and the timeline for getting those in. So that is our agenda for this evening. And I will start by asking Ms. Michael if she would review the attachments that are on board docs so everybody knows what, what we're looking at and for the folks who are watching, and kind of take us through, you know, what we're looking at and where we go from here, and then talk about the budget questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. So what we have posted as attachments for this evening's work session are, first, the agenda item, which shows all of the changes since the advertised budget. In addition to that, we created a PowerPoint summary that walks people through not only the changes in the agenda, but provides them with the background, how we got here, our strategic approach for this year's budget. And it also includes a forecast for FY 17, so really looking at that significant deficit that we face. So it really does highlight that, where we've been, the nearly half a billion dollars in reductions that we've taken since 2008, our strategy to protect our core services in this current budget FY 16, and then looking at that projected deficit prior to the county transfer of nearly 135 million for FY 17. Then lastly, the latest item that was posted is wording in terms of the amendment or the main motion, which is the omnibus. And from that omnibus motion, if any board members wish to make amendments, they're made to that omnibus, so that draft wording is also posted. So the other thing I wanted to take a minute just to follow up on is, since our last work session, we had a budget work session on April 27th. And at that work session, a number of questions were answered and those budget questions have been posted. So we had a question on special education enrollment, food service workers and snow days, reconciling the budget with our comprehensive annual financial report for FY 14, bonus options for considering providing bonuses to employees at year-end, the staffing we provide to small schools, the cost of enrollment growth and student demographic increases from our advertised budget to our approved, as well as a comparison between our FY 16 approved projection and FY 15, salary lapse information and how we budget for salary lapse, providing health insurance for all of our hourly employees, and then finally, a historical look at our year-end balance. So all of those information items have been posted. Then earlier today, we also did receive some questions regarding our lapse rate. So in addition to that budget question that's just posted, we each year account for base savings, which is the recurring impact of turnover when our more senior employees leave the system and we hire newer employees. So in addition to base savings, we budget each year for laps, we budget 2.1%. And the questions that we received were, how much would our lapse budget be if we budgeted at 5%, 8%, or 10%? So we currently budget at 2.1%, which is 44 million for that lapse for the year. As you remember from the work session on April 27th, if we were to budget our laps at a 10% rate, that would be 210 million in savings each year. So remember, any variance between what we budget for our compensation accounts and what actually occurs is reflected on our year-end agenda. So again, there's no found money. Any variance between our projection and the actual appears at year-end. So if we look at our last fiscal year end that ended, FY 14, right, our variance between what we budgeted and our compensation accounts, what actually occurred was 30.5 million or 1.4%. What I think is really important to note is that's only three days of pay for our employees. Right? So I looked at it as, if you took $5,000 home in a month, that means at the end of the month, between what you projected you would have and what you actually had left would be $75. To put it in terms that, that's kind of a little bit more relatable. Sometimes I think when you say $30 million, it sounds like a very large amount, but it's really just three days of pay. Right? And that's important because we budget our salaries and benefits centrally. That allows schools to hire the best possible teacher that they can find that meets the needs of their students. So we're projecting for what those employees' salaries will be when they're hired. So we're really well below the standard 2% variance that you would expect in terms of compensation accounts. Then lastly, when we look at our budget, our budget includes recurring items. When we've looked at one-time items that need to be funded, we've really been working to fund one-time items with our one-time funding available at year-end. Right? Similarly, as we're working our way away from budgeting for a beginning balance, right, eliminating that structural deficit, we've really focused on using our one-time funding at year-end to cover the cost of one-time items. So some of those examples include funding the public safety radios, we've used one-time funding at year-end for turf fields, for purchasing textbooks, and then also for buying buses, things of that nature. So we really have worked, as we've looked at our budget for FY 16, to ensure that the items that we're funding really do represent recurring needs.
Okay, I neglected to ask you, would you please introduce who you have with you today?
Thank you, and I should have thought of that. With me today, I have Alice Wingington and Michelle New, both outstanding employees from Budget Services. So thank you.
And of course, Ms. Quinn. Okay. Shall we go to the main motion, the omnibus motion? And do you want to review, Ms. Michael, how we're getting to that point? I mean, there's, the material is here, but I don't know to what extent we need to be reading the, all of the text here, but essentially, you've outlined the changes as a result of the revenue reduction, right?
Right. So when we look at the agenda presentation, if we look back, we had a March work session where the board talked about what methodology they wanted to use when creating the main motion when the budget was adopted. So if you remember back, we had multiple options. I think we presented you with an option A and an option B, right? And the board, remember, developed option C. So this really reflects our recommendation for option C, which is great. So when we presented the agenda item for new business, right, within that box is the motion that we used, which is really to adopt the budget as detailed in the FY 16 advertised budget and modified by the adjustments in this agenda. So when we presented the agenda item itself, we showed the required revenue adjustments, the required expenditure adjustments, and then we put in a placeholder for the amount that we needed to balance the budget. Then to address that placeholder, in section three, the superintendent prepared a recommendation. So that's how we presented the agenda when we went for information. So now, as we move to action, based on what you guys determined in your option C, right, the plan was to have the budget chair and vice chair, based on the consensus developed from the board at the work session on April 27th, and then at any conversations this evening, to develop an omnibus motion that would be a substitute for the placeholder, right? So it would remove the placeholder and come up with the recommendation to balance the budget based on that consensus that they've determined the board has. Then from that omnibus motion, any amendments are made. So again, within the box shown on the screen, it drafts what that omnibus motion would be, which is, which is more detailed to make it clear and more transparent for the community. So again, it starts with the advertised budget, then you're accepting the adjustments in section one, operating revenue required adjustments, then you're also accepting the required expenditure adjustments in section two, items A through D. That shows the total reductions of 2.5 million, and then you're replacing that section two E reduction placeholder with the superintendent's adjustment, reducing the 1% market scale adjustment included in the advertised budget to a 0.62% market scale adjustment. And that's how the budget's balanced.
Thank you, Ms. Michael. Do any board members have any questions or comments about the adoption language for the main motion as proposed? You did a very good job of explaining that. Okay. Well, then, moving on, next is an opportunity to discuss any potential amendments that any board member may be considering at this time. Ms. McLaughlin.
As I shared with our budget chair and vice, budget vice chair, I feel very strongly that this board made a commitment to our employees, that we've said for several years in a row that employee compensation is one of our top priorities. And while I know this board is disappointed that we did not get the full transfer from the board supervisors, the issue still remains that we're talking about 7.6 million dollars. And to say to our employees that we came up 7.6 million short and where we decided to have that shortfall occur is on the very thing that we said was our top budget priority, it just doesn't sit well with me. I can't publicly stand behind that. There are other things in this budget, and I wish that those had come forward, to say for a board that communicated employee compensation was a top priority of a $2.5 billion budget, that falling 7.6 million short and that's where it comes off, I'm still wrestling with that. So one of the things I wanted to share with everybody is, during our recent work session, some of my colleagues expressed angst and said, you know, it's too late in the year to cut anything. We haven't given enough fair warning to, whether it's employees and, and reduction in, in contract length, or reduction in positions, or even reduction in programs. So one of the things that occurred to me was, as Dr. Garza pointed out in that work session, we are going to have a very tough year, the following year, without a doubt. And there's going to be some programs and maybe in positions that we may not be able to continue. So one of the things that I have proposed every single year since I've been on this board is the AP and IB test fees. So I wanted you all to know that one of the things I'm considering is, because I will allow for people being uncomfortable, that we would decide now for FY 16 that we would remove FCPs from paying those, those fees, we can take the 4.8 million that we spend in AP and IB test fees, move it out of the recurring portion of the budget, and make it part of the one-time funding from year-end balance and/or the $8 million, draw from the $8 million reserve in the school board account. And so I will write that up in detail for all of you to visually look at it, but I want you to think about what that means. Last year, in the program guide, from the question I asked on page 54, in, in the program budget, the question was, looking at the jurisdictions around the Washington area, who pays for the student fees and who does not? And Montgomery County and Loudoun, they do not pay for their students' fees. The parents do. And even if we were to decide that we're not comfortable yet because we want to go ahead and have that conversation with the public, then you move it over to one-time costs for FY 16. That gives an entire year for Dr. Garza to determine whether or not that's going to be brought back into the budget, or it ends up remaining off the budget as we try to, again, demonstrate what are our priorities. I want everyone to keep be very mindful that the Attorney General of Virginia said that we had to pay for these tests only because Fairfax County voluntarily chooses to say that students may not receive the weights for these classes unless they sit for the test. And talking to parents and talking to even teachers and to students, there are kids who either didn't master the material, it just wasn't a successful instruction year, or they're just very difficult tests, whatever they may be. Students are not getting the college credit for the class, and families, if they were paying the $89 out of their pocket for each of these tests, wouldn't necessarily sign up for all of them. And it concerns me that this is, that we, as a school system, top 10 in the country and most likely top five of college boards, you know, accounts, they want us to be paying for these tests. They, they don't want to necessarily lose the guarantee. But as I reminded everybody a year ago, Montgomery County doesn't pay for these tests. They have a higher free reduced lunch population than we do, and they still have the same, if not higher, number of students taking these exams. So the notion that if we stopped paying, that students might drop off, or we, you know, we would not be able to ensure that our needier students take the tests, it just doesn't bear out. Also, as I stated last year, the federal government, the state and college board also provide payment to cover for students who are needy. So rather than ask anyone to wrestle with pulling this out of the budget for this year, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying move it over to one-time costs and honor what we told our employees and put that 4.8 million dollars toward the MSA. And, you know, that, that still requires finding about another 1.8 million in, or 2.8 million in the budget. But I, I think that's where we can get there. So anyway, I just, I want you all to know that, that that's one thing that I'm looking at already. And I, I would certainly welcome people, if they want to either think about it now or talk to me later, but it's something we bring up every single year and it just, there is no explanation for telling our, our employees, we'd rather pay almost $5 million in test fees for the vast majority of students whose families not only can afford it, but they benefit from it. And I can speak from my own family alone, my college freshman got $22,000 in tuition benefit from his AP scores. And, you know, the McLaughlins appreciate that, but you know what? It's not a budget priority.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I'm going to ask Mr. Moon to speak because he needs to leave, and then following him will be Ms. Schultz.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Just quickly, I am, you know, board members will probably remember what I said at the last, hopefully, at the last budget work session, that I, I would be considering, considering a potential compensation amendments. I am still pondering over potential amendments. If I come up with any amendment, it would be in a form of a bonus, one-time bonus, you know, most likely directing the superintendent to find the funding out of year-end, which won't be until the second meeting in July. And if we do, we have, you know, we have received steps, responses to some of those compensation questions. I think it is, you know, budget question number 42 or something like that, that... I think it is, you know, budget question number 42 or something like that, that already shows that if we did about $253, it will cost us $6.5 million. I'm not looking at, I'm not looking for $6.5 million. I'm looking for something around $4 to $5 million, which will be somewhere between $155 to about $200 per employee. I know that there is a deadline for me to submit a budget amendment. Madam Budget Chair, is that tomorrow?
Yes.
4 o'clock?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Budget Chair. Our oblige with the deadline requirement, that gives me another 20 hours. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. So we'll go on to Ms. Schultz, and what I'll do is have everybody who has any amendment ideas go ahead and put those out as concisely as possible. And then just open up to a little discussion if any board members want to share any initial reactions, because it might save time in the long run. So Ms. Schultz.
So I was fascinated, Dr. Garza, by the list that you read of the compilation of meetings over time. And I would love to have that, because that does show the work of the board over time. But the interesting thing about that, and we'll stay with just this calendar year, is that we started on the 8th of January this calendar year, having the budget presented to us. And from that point forward, we've been sluest into, don't change anything. Don't change anything. Don't propose anything at the advertised budget. We want to have a singular voice. We're going to be on a new budget message. And then in very short order, it became, it's too late, it's too late, it's too late. And so including in our individual meetings is, well, you know, there was all kinds of dissuasion about, you know, we don't, we want to, you know, we've got program stuff we've got to do later. You know, we don't want to dig into the line items right now. There are certain things we're trying to accomplish. And that does speak to what Dr. Garza's trying to do at a big, at a big tent approach. However, it's not Dr. Garza's budget, it's our budget. And so at the end of the day, we have to own this. And I have, I do have some concerns about where we are on messaging to employees and where we wind up. And if we've necessarily taken, I'm not going to say the straightest path, it's a path, it's one way to get through the maze, but I don't know that it necessarily reflects all the different voices. And I look back to a year ago, I have to slide up, May 22nd, a year ago, and I look at attempting to provide compensation relief by being innovative with our priorities on some contract cuts for assistant principals, on what Ms. McLaughlin just brought up was the AP and the IB fees, on contract reductions in different areas to provide earlier scale adjustments and improve the pay last year, and a whole host of other amendments. And just like every other time, we're right back to, we're not going to entertain anything, and we're not going to do it early, and we're not going to do it late. Because if it's too early, then it doesn't fit with the message. And if it's too late, well, it's too late in the game. And it's always the next budget cycle where something's going to be a priority. So on the one hand, you know, there was money here last year if we shifted priorities where we could have done more pre-K this year. There's money here if we had shifted priorities where we could have given employees compensation earlier. There was money here that we could have had more social workers and psychologists, which we've just seen an alert. And we chose, we chose, not in Dr. Garza's budget, but in our budget, we chose not to do any of that. And we've chosen it over and over again. So now it's no longer, we have to carry the water. This is Dr. Garza and her staff's budget to us, but from this point forward, it's ours. And so if we choose to carry the water from this point on, and this becomes our responsibility, and it's hands-off, we can't do any amendments, nobody's really going to seriously entertain anything, then nothing changes, then it isn't, then that's no longer just Dr. Garza's budget, then that's ours too. And I think that she's done, under the auspices of what's happened at the Board of Supervisors, the very best to understand what our priorities are. But at the end of the day, it still has to have the imprimatur of this board.
So Ms. Schultz, are you proposing an amendment or thinking about one?
So what I'm trying to do is, you know, I can draft one amendment, two amendments, eight amendments, and we can say, you know what, we're going to slightly shift our priorities. And I want to thank Mr. Latif, because I didn't realize you were as much a data wonk as I am sometimes. We are talking, out of 185,347 students, we're talking $41 a student. If this board can't find $41 a student and decide to reprioritize to 0.002923% of the budget, out of a $2.6 billion budget, if that, even that is off the table, I don't understand what we're doing. I mean, I, you know, she's done the best that she can, but if 0.002% of the budget is sacrosanct and nothing can move, and we can't say pay is going to be a priority, then, and I'm sorry, Ms. Hines, if this is boring for you, but this is the one time of the year that, well...
That is not fair. I do not want that on the record. That was not a word face.
I've been watching a lot of emotion that you are fed up with this, and this is my opportunity to reach out to you and say, listen, if there's any inkling that this board is going to seriously entertain any movement of money, I'd like to hear from the board. If you're just going to say flat out, there's nothing we're going to entertain, we're not going to do it, don't go to any effort, then I'd like you to just say it now.
Okay. So do you have anything else you want to put forward as we begin the discussion portion of the meeting? Anything specific? No? Okay.
I think that's a big enough net that people can decide whether they're going to leap in or not.
Okay. So now, does anyone else have any amendments that they're considering? I didn't think so. Okay. So now, we'll, oh, Mr. Stork?
I have a follow-on motion, so I don't know if you want to include that as an amendment or not. So I'll be doing my standard, my usual follow-on motion to the budget, so, which is regarding our commitment to employee compensation for our next budget. So I'm making that our highest priority once again. So I don't know. Again, I just wanted to make sure that's out there. I'll obviously work through the usual process to have it included, but I wanted to make sure that was on the record.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stork. Ms. Smith?
The slides with this, that are on this presentation, if I remember right. Okay. If you look at Slide 12, Mr. Stork, what's, and you'll probably be more general, but it just has the information there, building this budget for FY '17 projections is looking at doing a step and a 1.5%. And I know we've been more general than that. So however you frame that, if it's just a priority for compensation, I just wanted to point out that we do have some information out there. That's all.
And the reason we picked that projection of a step and a 1.5% market scale adjustment is to be even with the county. So that's what they included in their multi-year budget, so we use the same increase amount.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin?
So I just want to say, I think in listening to what Ms. Schultz said, I'd like for people to think about a macro-level amendment. And the bottom line is that Dr. Garza has prepared a budget, and she has brought it to us and said, I think this is what you told me were your priorities. And in the end, next Thursday, we really are all going to have to answer to it and say that when we vote for the main motion, are we prepared to say our budget priority was what we instructed Dr. Garza to do, and we had no changes or additions to it? Because as I hear what Mr. Stork said, which is every year to make this a top priority, and as Ms. Schultz said, we came up short by point, what was the number there? 0.3%?
002923.
I mean, it really worries me, because the way a budget works is, the board says to the superintendent, these are our budget priorities, build it this way. And somehow, we've miscommunicated, as far as I'm concerned, in saying, out of 2.5-plus billion dollars, where we came up short was on the thing we said was the most important. So there's a line item in there that is other professional services of $17 million. I mean, there's money in this budget. We have to decide whether we're going to communicate to Dr. Garza or not that we want to change the budget and get the 7.6 million in there.
So am I hearing that you're suggesting a potential amendment that would direct the superintendent to find $7.6 million in order to fully fund the compensation request?
Well, I really didn't want to do that to her, but I do want everybody to just understand our responsibility. In the end, as I remember, this budget lays out how we plan to spend our money, but it is not fixed line items. So, you know, whether or not we decide on switching things from recurring costs to one-time costs, like I have my one amendment, that's one way to do it. Mr. Moon is saying, we just draw off of the year-end balance and do a bonus. I mean, those are different things that are definitely on the table. But again, this isn't directed at Dr. Garza. I think we haven't done a good job of sharing with you from our prior work sessions that when we came up short from the board supervisors, we still wanted to find the money somewhere else and not off of the MSA. That, I fault the 12 of us.
Okay. So I have, yes, Dr. Garza, and then Ms. Hines and Ms. Smith.
First of all, I think it's important to know that the employee associations have been supportive of where we are. Now, I know that FEA made a different kind of approach or said something a little bit more nuanced this past week at the budget hearing with regard to lists. No one's asked me for a list of cuts to this point, and I just want to be clear on that. If you are going to direct me to go back and find the cuts for 7.6 million, I think it's very, very, very important for you to give, tell me where you want me to find that for several reasons. Because 7.6, although you can break it down per individual student cost, and it seems like it's a nominal amount, it's harder to find than you think in our budget. And it has implications for us down the road that I think I would be reticent to making those decisions without the board saying, this is what I want you to do. I think you have to tell me where you want me to find it. And I'm not trying to shirk that responsibility. I'm happy to work with you, but I'm just telling you because, first of all, it creates a condition where our starting point next year is higher. So we'd have to keep that in mind. And then secondly, that's one last thing that's off the table in June for us to cut to get to our 100 million. So there are implications for all of these things, you know, if I were to go to find the 7.6. And I just think the board has to be clear and give me direction on where you want me to go to get it.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. Ms. Hines?
Well, first, I want to apologize. I apologize to Mrs. Schultz and anyone else. I'm going on three hours' sleep, which is nobody's problem but mine, but I'm tired, I'm not bored. And I am, I guess I'm also as worried as everybody else is about this budget and how we're going to manage it, right? And at our work session, I did talk about trying to find the money out of year-end and put it into our salaries for next year. I was reminded that that's one-time money going to ongoing expenses. And so Dr. Garza helpfully brought up the idea of the bonuses, but, and I know that, you know, Mr. Moon may bring something forward on that. Having spoken to one of the employee association leaders about that, and just remembering my own experiences as a teacher, bonuses are not very popular among employees. They don't go very far. And so at least from one of the employee association leaders, the message I got pretty loud and clear was, you're going to give teachers something that they don't really want, and it will come out of the potential for a real raise in 2017. So to me, I'm beginning to feel that's not a good trade-off. And so I've done some thinking since the last work session, and that's kind of where I am now. I mean, honestly, for Ms. McLaughlin, my feeling is, I'm not, I'm not saying no to the idea of fees as a way to close the gap. I don't think I'm going to present it because I don't feel great about it, but if someone could talk me into it, you know, I would listen. I think I would rather see those, I'd rather see us just go ahead and vote that up or down now, rather than take money out of year-end with the thought in mind that we will eventually take it out of IB and AP fees, which I think is what you're proposing. And, you know, the problem I have with that is that I don't think we can bind ourselves that way, or we wouldn't be binding ourselves that way for next year. So basically, we, it would be coming out of year-end, and we, yeah, and we might or might not decide to fix it in the next year with AP and IB fees. And so even though we have not talked about those fees this year yet, you know, we have in past years, I think it's, you know, something that people may understand comes up when we have this kind of an issue. I will say that, you know, I think we've always, I mean, I hear Dr. Garza here, and I don't, we did this a few years ago. We told the previous superintendent, find $7 million, you know? And then the next year, when we realized where that money was found, we weren't very happy with the cuts that were made. And so when you talk about this being our budget that we're responsible for, I think we have to be responsible for finding the cuts and saying exactly where we want the money to come from and living with those consequences. So, you know, if anybody can bring something, you know, I keep saying, if someone can solve this, I'm with you, okay? But I can't find anything right now in the budget that will make up the difference.
And Ms. Hines, if I might add, I think if we could reverse time, and this was 2008 or 2009, and you directed me to go find 7.6 million, I said, okay, I can do it, I'll go find it. But in light of where we are, I mean, we've been over and over that old menu, remember the menu? And we're getting this ready for this work that we're about to undertake. And I just, I'm just very mindful of any of the additional cuts would have significant consequences, and I just feel like we all have to be really a part of that discussion. I just hate for you all to tell me that, and then I go do something, and as you pointed out, that is something that you felt like you couldn't live with, because all of them will hurt at this point.
Ms. Smith?
I have a question for budget staff, because I don't understand a reference Mrs. McLaughlin was making about taking the AP and IB fees and moving them to one-time funds and then using that money for employee compensation. Could you explain that to me?
So if you were to eliminate the recurring funding for AP and IB test fees to recurrently pay for a salary increase, when you paid for the AP/IB fees with one-time funding at the end of this fiscal year, you would have no funding to pay for them the following year? Right? Unless you reallocated something else to pay them?
So you would pay for the AP and IB fees with whatever was available at year-end?
You would have to commit to charging AP and IB fees to make it recurring, but for this coming school year, you could take it out of year-end for one-time funding, is I think how I'm understanding what Ms. McLaughlin is putting out there.
So that's going to reduce the, we still have to find how much money to make beginning balance that we have budgeted?
We need to identify another 23.8, I believe.
Okay. So that means we would have to do the 23.8 plus 4.8 that we'd have to find at year-end to match all that. Commit to it the following year. Okay. So that puts a significant pressure on us to find that money at a time where we have reduced our compensation file so much. So it creates a lot of stress.
Correct. The other thing is that you wouldn't have the ability to, or to charge AP and IB fees to help address the FY '17 deficit.
Okay. So I would not support going that route. And I, you know, rewind the tape to what I said last year. So I just, I don't think that's a good way to make a decision.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Evans?
Yes, thank you. I guess I'll start by saying that I agree with where we are on the omnibus I guess I'll start by saying that I agree with where we are on the omnibus motion. I think that's a good place for us to start, so I support that. I don't know if you were asking us for that, but I do support that. In terms of the idea of a bonus, at this point, I believe I'm where Ms. Hines is now. I don't see it as being the big impact, and I see it as being something that we would either have to fund the next year or regret it the next year. So at least that's where I am now. I'll listen to, if Mr. Moon has an amendment, I'll certainly listen to his rationale and what the cost of that would be. I know we all have a lot of heartache over this budget for a lot of things. One of mine, and I'm looking at page 13, and I don't for a minute disagree with any of the unfunded needs that are listed there. One that I would add for myself is the parent liaisons. I very much want to see us bring the parent liaisons from being hourly workers. These are critical employees, and I very much want to see us, as soon as possible, bring them on to being full-time equivalent staff. It's not a big-ticket item. So I would say if I were looking to try to find some money either at year-end or some other time, I don't have an amendment on this, but I did want to lay down a marker that if I can find something that we might be able to do at year-end for those employees who are still below the living wage, we don't have very many anymore happily. We've made some improvements on that. But if we could do something for them, if we could do something for the parent liaisons, I would prefer to go in that direction than some of these others that we're talking about. So that's really all I have for now.
Thank you. Mrs. Strauss.
I know in speaking with various of our employee groups, the step increase is the most important because it benefits them the most over time. And I have heard the same thing, that while bonuses, it's always welcome extra money, what is more valued is a step, and that there is concern that whatever adjustments we decide to make in this budget, that if we create a bigger hole for the next budget, it'll make it that much harder to be able to make the pay increases, especially the step. I suspect that looking forward to the 2017 budget, we're going to have to look at a huge menu again. And I suspect at that point, everything will come back on, I suspect, fees of all sorts and programs and positions and what have you, because that's what we're going to have to do. So rather than taking a small look at it this time, I know we're going to have to look at it for the next year's budget. So I certainly welcome listening to whatever else my colleagues have to say, but I have heard from the teachers that they would rather that we work hard to be able to preserve the step for 2017 and not do anything that would create that, for that to become a possibility. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Schultz.
So, one, I want to say thank you to Ms. Hines for reminding us that instead of, because I think we have had a reticence in the past to maybe find the numbers ourselves, and that reminder that, oh, hey, we told a previous superintendent to do a cut, and then we're like, wait a minute, that's where the cut was? And that's a really good kind of anchor point in the discussion. So I do appreciate that, that if we're going to come up with something, rather than say, oh, it's our budget, but you go find it, because then we're going to hold her accountable. And I'd rather, if we're going to dig in, that we do it and take that off her shoulders and say, oh, by the way, and you're not accountable for it, we are, because it's our budget. So that's a good reminder point. I do think that the comment that both you and Ms. Evans had about the bonus gives me a great degree of clarity, that that's like a salve, so it sounds like it's good. It sounds like we're doing something, but that's my, and Dr. Garza, you're going to appreciate that, this is my adage of, if you're in a rocking chair and you're moving, it doesn't mean you're going anywhere. So the motion doesn't indicate forward progress, and that's a motion, but it's not necessarily forward progress. So in his absence, I don't know what it's potentially going to look like. I think I'll give it due consideration, but I agree that that may potentially not be the way forward. But I also want to be at the, anything at this point is difficult. Anything on January 8th was difficult, and anything since then was difficult. It's a $2.6 billion budget. It's going to be difficult, but that's what we're supposed to do. So sometimes, if we want to shift a priority and we say, you know what, this may be difficult to find $41 a child to get to 1% MSA or something else, if it's school psychologists and counselors, there is a due consideration that I think we all need to bring to go, you know what, this may be hard and may be a shifting priority, but you know what, sometimes I say to my kids, well, you know what, you can't have the new shirt, but you know what, your feet have grown. You've got to get new shoes, and try buying size 14 tonne shoes. It's not easy. But if you need to buy the new shoes, you've got to buy the new shoes, and the shirt may have to wait for another day, so.
Okay. Ms. Narnak Kofax.
I have to say, where we are right now, I think a lot of us are feeling frustrated and I think very much in pain about where we are. We knew this was a bare-bones budget to begin with, and we have to remember how we got here. Remember how we got here last year, and it is the continual underfunding of our system. It has happened, and then we find ourselves at the end of the year hoping and praying that we can do what we said we did, and outlining our priorities and trying to make the best of it. I disagree somewhat with the way Ms. Schultz had presented it, because I think there have been lots of opportunities to make suggestions along the way as this budget was built. And while Dr. Garza ultimately executes it and presents it, it's with a lot of our suggestions that this was built. When she had her lists in the spring on the listening tours, every one of us came together and said, this is what we want on the table, this is what we don't want on the table. I think there were many, many opportunities to do that. Where we have found ourselves continually is not being able to adequately fund our employees. And I think looking over and seeing what our other work sessions were tonight, we see there's lots of areas with warning, and we see there's a lot of holes, and we see so many things that we didn't even ask for in this budget because we knew this had to be a stabilizing year. This was a year where we were not going to ask for the sun and the moon, but ask for a bare minimum, and we didn't get what we needed. And that's distressing, and that's troubling. So as Ms. Hines, I think you said it best, if someone can come up with that extra $7.6 and find it in a way that's not harmful and agreeable to a lot of us, I would be willing to do that. I've looked myself. I can't, I haven't found that magic bullet. What's been on the table, again, talking to, as you said, employee associations, not so excited about the bonus. I don't particularly agree with the IB and AP paying for, us not paying for those. I think there, when we had that on the table a few years ago, there was a lot of people that said, I have to choose between this and that, to whether or not I can pay for my son's or daughter's test fees. And they are an athlete, and they want to, and they need to have a sports pack, and I need to be able to pay for that. So those are really painful choices for us to have to do. And whether you like it or not, high school rankings, they are based upon the IB and AP tests and what they come out with, and whether or not we want to be flippant and say, you know, U.S. News &amp; World Report came out this year, we don't care. People care. Parents care. Parents are buying houses in the best school district, buying around those top 10 schools, and they care. And if those rankings go down, people will care, and that will harm us. So I believe there's too many families out there that don't have the luxury of, it's okay, and I don't need to make this choice, of course I'll pay for this, or I don't think it's important enough. I think a lot of parents appreciate that and need that. And so that's another option that's been floated that I am not ready to support right now. But I would be willing and able to listen to my colleagues, and we've got a short deadline. And I have to be honest, please, if you don't make the deadline tomorrow, there may be some wiggle room. But the bottom line, and I know Ms. Smith is going, no, but the bottom line is, you know, you can't wait too long because it just gets to the point where people can't synthesize it, can't understand it. And so we have some wiggle room, but please try to be conscientious of the decisions that were made, and Ms. Smith is going to correct me.
Thank you. Mr. Stork.
I have a question on the VRS reduction by the state, because I don't recall specifically, but my sense was that they reduced that without any specific actuarial assessment that the reduction was in order. It was used more as a budget gimmick. Is that?
They actually used one-time funding, I believe it was from surplus property, to make a payment to VRS, and then that payment reduced the future costs, which is how they lowered the rate.
So they actually paid for it?
Correct.
One-time money?
They did.
And reduced, obviously, continuing minus result. Okay, well, that's better than we've seen in the past. That's positive. All right, thank you.
I have Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Smith.
I very much appreciate my colleagues who are responding to my amendment proposal, because I think it's very helpful for me to understand the rationale. And one of the things that I really try to do in our work together is to be data-driven. And so what do we know about the data? We know that Montgomery County enjoys same reputation and rankings as we do. We know that Montgomery County demographically has as many, if not more, free and reduced lunch students than we do. And we know that Montgomery County students take their AP exams at the same rate or better than we do. Montgomery County does not pay for these tests, and we do. So if someone wants to bring some data that shows me that school systems of our caliber have not paid for these tests and seen a problem, then that's a data conversation. But I'm concerned that, we have had this conversation for several years, I've not had anyone bring me data or factual explanations for why Montgomery County and Loudoun can go the direction that a vast portion of public high schools in the United States do, which is you get credit for taking the class, and the families decide whether they're going to have their child take the test or not. And I'm trying to make it easy by saying, you don't have to make the decision next Thursday, you just shift it from being recurring to one-time cost. And then if everybody really does believe, after intensive analysis from Dr. Garza's administration to bring it back to us and say, here's all of the evidence-based reasons for why we should keep paying for it, even though our neighboring jurisdictions who enjoy the same reputation don't do it, then that's a conversation to have. But I know that next year, we're going to be having to look at a lot of things on the table. But for people to just say, we believe that we need to keep AP and IB test fees as a recurring cost for next year, and employee compensation that we'd want to get to, which is as puny of $7.6 million, the macro-level concern I've got is the board supervisors are looking at us and saying, don't you dare point the finger at us because you didn't get an extra $7.6 million, because in $2.5 billion budget, if you can't find that, that's your budgeting priority, it's not on us. And 100 million is a whole different conversation to be had. But I've now been on this board a little over three years, this is our fourth budget working together, and I am really struggling, year in and year out, to hear employee compensation is one of our most important priorities, and yet again, we're scrambling to try and find on our own, when we have experts in Dr. Garza's administration who could certainly, if we had directed them, which I don't think we did as a board, individually, some of us might, I think as a board, we said to her, yep, if the board supervisors doesn't come back with the money we need, we understand it'll come off of compensation. And that's, this board's to own. But if I do believe in Dr. Garza's capabilities, that if this board said to her at the work session we had had, no, we don't want this coming off of compensation, so bring us a list to find $7.6, I guarantee it's there. Absolutely. Would we like it? Would it be comfortable? No. But it's doable, and I just wanted to be above board with you guys. I think we have a real responsibility to do some work here.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, and then Mrs. Strauss, and then I believe we're winding down.
So I don't want to see you wiggle with the deadlines. There's a reason we have the deadlines. We need to ensure that any amendments get scrubbed, that the numbers work right, and we have a responsibility to the community to get these amendments posted by Monday so the community can see them and weigh in. And I don't think it's fair for them to be too late, and then budget staff has to work over the weekend to get them ready. So please don't wiggle. Please get your amendments in. Hey, by noon time would even be better. So there's a purpose to that.
That's spoken like a classroom teacher, isn't it, Ms. Smith?
So thank you.
My apologies. Ms. Smith.
Mrs. Strauss. First of all, about a $7.6 million, if we're going to take it out of positions, it's somewhere between 80 and 90 positions, depending on the pay scale. I have a question on the FY 2017 budget, and I don't need a lot of detail, but there is a health insurance increase, expectation for about a 6.5% increase. Is that, we aren't rebidding our health insurance plans again, so this is simply based on experience and the size of the workforce?
That is correct. That projected increase is based on our experience.
Okay, thank you.
You know, we monitor claims and that kind of thing.
Right, exactly. I know. Yeah, thank you.
Mrs. Schultz, for a quick go-back.
I swear, it's a short one. So I have one more question. On the, because we have the laps, is the $7.6 million, the MSA difference for actual employees' pay or projected employees' pay? Do you understand the difference of what I'm asking? So is that a, it's most likely to be that number, or we know indefatigably it's that number?
I would say I think that's a good estimate, but it will be impacted by the new teachers we hire next year, because it's going to adjust the salary scale. So at this point, we don't know exactly who we're going to hire for next year.
Okay, so the second part of what you said is really what brings to mind. And do we still have the $8 million in the school board? Okay.
Okay, I'm going to take my turn now, just quickly. I wish we could do more for compensation, but I feel like we've done as much as we possibly could. I don't favor the bonus for reasons that have already been said. It just doesn't seem to be popular, and I guess I would rather save, if we had extra money, save it and push it forward to do more in compensation the following year. A priority for me, I think, is to make sure that FY '16 is relatively stable. I mean, after '15 was so tumultuous with all the cuts. And so if we were to try to find any additional funds, it would be very important that we didn't disrupt staffing at this point, people who are already planning on their livelihood to come up with 80 or 90 positions to cut at this stage of the game, I would think would be difficult to do and really not very fair to people. But that being said, if there are other line items that we could go to, like travel, I mean consultants, things like this, where those are kind of the nice-to-have versus the have-to-haves, now I'd be willing to consider some of those kinds of things. of things. And I don't know if you could get to real money by taking some out of some of those kinds of funds, but perhaps. Yeah. So, go ahead.
A lot of that was cut last year.
Right.
When we look at departmental cuts. We cut 70-something positions at central, in the central function last year, but we also cut anything like that. Like, so a lot of the professional development was cut. You remember, we took how much out of professional development last year? It was like over $3 million. So a lot of that has been cut over time, but any ideas you have, we'll certainly explore.
We can always take it out of our own. We've done that in the past.
And furthermore, regarding the AP and IB fees, I do think that's something that we should start discussing now regardless of whether or not we can actually figure out how to implement that. Because I do feel, our mission is K through 12 and, you know, giving a college course is one thing, but paying for college credit is something else. And so that's my opinion and it may be that when we put everything on the table in FY 17, we put it on the table then, along with lots of other things. Because until we have our strategic plan and we really have a vision, I think it's very difficult to start cherry picking things. Well, we'll do this, but we won't do that till we have kind of the context. So I do appreciate putting that idea on the table. Are there any other last comments or questions? Okay, we've got, okay, Ms. Hines, Ms. Evans, Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. A lot of go-bangs. I would just say that I will make my board colleagues a deal, okay? That I won't say no to anything just because it's on the table at this point. I won't. I will look seriously at anything that comes across. If in return, we could all try to have a conversation that recognizes that we all care about employee compensation as the first thing. That none of us wants to shortchange our employees and that we really just look at, if someone brings a priority decision to the table, we look at that particular priority question. And that we all try to be as unified with each other as we can. You know, it's like a family. When money's tight, you fight, right? So let's try not to do that.
Ms. Evans.
I just wanted to mention briefly that we have this compensation study coming next year. And I guess I have some high hopes for that, that we can, that that will help guide us for the future and that will help us figure out just how to really get from this awful situation where we're just cutting and freezing and then, you know, pushing up a little bit. Hopefully, that will help guide us for the future. And so I do think that some of these things, next year will have to be on the table, whether we like them or not. But I think it should be in connection with this larger look, this overarching look at how we really can move ourselves forward on compensation.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Yeah, a quick question for Ms. Michael. I sent you an email asking if you'd give the written response to that question about employee attrition and the savings with that. But I was just curious, you mentioned that we do it at 2.1% and that yields $44 million. But I didn't hear the amount if we were to make that attrition at 5%. What would that be?
5% would be $105 million.
So if we do 2.1% and that's, you said 44 million?
Correct.
And going up to 5% is $105 million. And the concern is obviously that we don't want to get too close.
We don't have that much funding available. So if you just look at last year when we budgeted that 2.1%, all of the other money that fell out of our compensation accounts only totaled $30 million?
Right. Yeah. So that's my point is, all right, so we ended up having $30 million or so, right? That was at 2.1.
Correct.
So if we went to, let's say, a 2.5 calculation or even a 3, it might draw down that number from 30 million to 20 million or 25 million. I mean, even if we were only trying to grab $2 million out of that estimation, it's a calculation.
You'd have to go the opposite way. You would have to go the opposite way.
Yeah.
Can you talk about that, Kristin? You'd have to make it lower.
The challenge is, when we look at that variance, right, we're budgeting both for salaries and benefits, right? So we're projecting who we're going to hire, who's going to be here next year, what type of health insurance they might pick, based on the plan, based on family coverage, right? And since we're making those projections, really this variance is extremely small, right? And if we're off on this variance, because this is 90% of our budget and particularly when we look at FY 16 and we have made adjustments to every other account to make them as tight as possible, we've budgeted our fuel at exactly what we're currently paying, so there's no wiggle room there. We've recognized all of the savings we possibly can in terms of our utilities. If we're off, we're going to overspend our budget, right?
Right, but the beauty is that, a couple of things on that. First of all, if people leave because they retire, they were being paid at a higher rate than the new people who come in.
Correct, but we've already budgeted for that because in addition to the lapse, we're budgeting for the base savings.
Right, but the also thing to keep in mind is, if we're only looking at a couple million dollar variance and your concern is, oh, would have, that we needed an extra $2 million? Well, that's what a school board reserve of $8 million is for. So in other words, if you're looking at recurring costs again versus, you know, one-time funding, there is funds in there where you're trying to only find a couple million dollars out of 2.5 or $6 million. That's where I'm going to keep going to, that we can do this if, we just have to be committed to it. And we have to be able to be willing to look in the areas that we've constantly said are, you know, off limits. Why do we have a reserve account if we're not going to ever draw on it if we need it? And we're talking about a small amount of money. So, and the one final thing I'll say is, I know we've heard in the past that it's really important to have 1.5% as, you know, a year-end balance and a protective balance to have, right, for good finances.
It's really closer to 2% would be our target.
Right, but that's for any operating business. So the board supervisors, as I understand, their best practice is they should be coming somewhere between 1.5 and 2%, right?
We're not budgeting to end up with an ending balance, right? We're budgeting based on what we think will happen. And when we measure our variance, right, 2% is considered a good, an accurate budget.
Right.
So we're finding that our budget is accurate in terms of what we're projecting and what we're actually seeing.
So do the, does the police department, Fairfax County Human Services, they all budget to be within 1.5 to 2%?
They all budget based on what they actually think their expenditures will be and their experience tends to be just like us, approximately 2%.
And then they turn it back over to the board supervisors.
And then I think we have to keep in mind, with the police department and any other agency within the county, they're all part of their general fund. Whereas our operating fund is a separate fund. So as part of the general fund, if the police department overspends, it's okay because if there's another agency that underspends, they're all still within their operating fund. So they could move funds between agency to accommodate that and do the appropriation authority.
And they have a lot of reserves. They have a lot more reserves, which is fine.
Right, but again, I think the question has just come down to that we've been a very responsible school system with a responsible school board that has a year-end, you know, balance that's, and a year-end carryover that's ended with us having then a beginning balance. But the bottom line is, we didn't get the full funding we needed. And I kind of go back to saying that if the board supervisors felt we didn't need that full transfer amount, then we do have money where we can draw on. And again, it's shifting things from a one-time cost or from recurring cost to one-time cost. And the question is, what would that be? Especially because we're looking at a 100, a projected 100 million, but it's not really projected that because the board supervisors are saying, count on 3% minimum that we're going to include to your transfer. So, you know.
Okay, I'm going to ask Dr. Garza to speak briefly and then Mrs. Strauss will have the last word and then we're going to finish up for the evening.
I don't know if you want me to talk about that because, yeah, I think their budget guidance for next year is irresponsible. I mean, how many times will you talk about fiscal year 17 and to say 3% is good? So, I mean, I don't always, I think they also realize that we have very tight budget and they've acknowledged in meeting after meeting that we've, you know, done a great job on our budget. So to say now that they think we have excess money somewhere, I think is disingenuous on their part. But our year-end balance, you know, I'm fearful if we think that, you know, when we've cut budgets and we've got them so tight, that $8 million, folks, we've used it for snow removal, we've used it for other times when we, I mean, that's the only set aside of money that we have. And I think that's sufficient, okay? I'm not suggesting we should have these huge reserves, but that's all we have. So next year, let's say fuel goes up and there's something catastrophic happens, you know, we may very well need that money because we've tightened all those other accounts so much. Or we could have another, you know, snow mageddon. That money will be needed, that money will be needed for that purpose. So, you know, certainly, this is, as was pointed out, you know, we serve at the will of the board and whatever you all determine we need to do, I just think it is our responsibility also to caution on some of these things about the impact, should we determine that we use them.
Thank you. Ms. Hines for a clarifying question and then Mrs. Strauss.
Quick clarifying question. The $8 million reserve, as I understand it, one day's payroll is about $10 million? Okay, so that $8 million reserve wouldn't even pay one day's payroll if we had to go into it. Thank you.
Mrs. Strauss. So patient.
Thank you. A couple of things. First of all, by Virginia code, we would be criminally liable individually if we ended the year after KPMG walks out and we are in deficit. It has happened to other school systems in Virginia and it's been a little sticky when that happens. In the past, we've, we have used, in the year before we set aside the $8 million reserve, we did not estimate lapse and turnover correctly. And we began to run a $20 million deficit in October and had a terrible time covering it, which we, but we had, we had to do it. We finally took money back from schools. It was the only way we could close the gap. It was, it was very unpleasant. And it wasn't because we had intentionally done that, but we had underestimated the swing in the salary file. The salary file is so large because we're a labor-intensive organization, as we should be. So we have to be very careful how we project that because it's huge numbers and it has tremendous consequence. So the, and I was going to say, in the past, that $8 million reserve, when we tried to put it in, we would have liked to have put in a little larger sum, but we've never been able to do that. It has been used for years when we had student enrollment growth that was unusual and by the middle of the year, we had to add more teachers. One year, I think we used four or $5 million out of it. We've used it for snow. We've used it one year when the sales tax, remember, the sales tax is estimated, collected and used in the same year. And we had one year where the sales tax projections ran short. And so that has come, that has been useful and it has saved us from either, from having to go back to schools to have to take money back in mid-year, which is the experience we had one year. And it's, it's very, very unfair to a school to come back and say, and it was a significant amount, it's $20 million we had to take out of other school accounts. So that's why that is there and it is very small at any rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Strauss. Just to review our next steps, by 4:30 tomorrow, if you have an amendment, submit it to Kathy and myself, Dr. Garza, Ms. Quinn, Ms. Michael and Ms. Goddard. Amendments will be posted Monday, the 18th. And of course, our business meeting is a week from today to approve the budget. Ms. McLaughlin, question?
Yeah, process question. So from my experience in the past, we submit to you our draft question. Staff usually then reviews the question and puts it into beautiful budget amendment language and comes back to us before it's posted. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. All right.
All right. Sorry, we didn't ask you all any questions over there. I feel like we should come up with some just to... Thank you all for staying so late. This work session is adjourned.